Order please. I will go please.
Councilor Mary.
Here.
Councilwoman Green.
Here.
Mayor Proton Wibberland.
Here.
Councilwoman Salamani.
Here.
Mayor Ashworth.
Here.
The video is not working, it says it needs a different panel.
What we call that editor.
We council, my name is Annie Durham, I reside at three zero nine Aspen Street and I am the CTE Director for the Cripple Creek Municipal District. I'll be brief, I just wanted to encourage you who have not done so this week, driven past the high school, but our steel is officially going up. And there is a semblance of a building that is not happening and so. The original completion date was set for February eighth, weather has set us back a little bit and so they're looking at completion by the end of February, so just wanted to let you know where we're at.
Okay. For the month of November sixteenth meeting.
I make a motion we approve the minutes for the number of November sixteenth twenty twenty two meeting.
Now second. Oh please.
Councilwoman Green.
Yes.
Councilwoman Mary.
Yes.
Councilwoman Salamani.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Wibberland.
Yes.
Mayor Ashworth.
Yeah.
Reports, City Minister.
Thank you Mayor of the council. Couple of things, one year anniversaries, Mark Chula with Animal Control, Ken Hartsfield Planning Community Development Director. James Wells is our Reserve Firefighter. We made their one year, we got rid of them, which is a good thing. Something we're kind of proud of, that I didn't know was happening, the wastewater treatment plants helped the state out. We were taking, we took forty eight samples within twenty five weeks, this all due to COVID. And they were trying to track through the wastewater treatment plants around the state, how COVID was progressing. And our treatment plant was one of them that they selected, so. Our treatment plant took forty eight samples during a twenty five week period and we have a proclamation from the governor thanking the wastewater treatment plant facility in Cripple Creek and then we also received. If I can get it, certificate of appreciation from the Department of Public Health and Environment. The same thing, so, good job. Thank you, I appreciate you. Then yesterday, Steve and Paul and I. And our engineer Adam with Aqua Works made a presentation before a committee for Bella and Pueblo. There were sixty, I think sixty six different communities presented through yesterday and today. And that was for our four hundred thousand, we're requesting for engineering services for water wastewater line replacement extension. We should here next week, if we get the four hundred thousand, but. I don't know how much money they had to divide up, but there were a lot of communities there asking for funds. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
In council, I have a number of items I need to.
Okay, thank you. Presentation update, I report legislative update, Saul Eagle Mabels.
He's not with us on Zoom at the moment.
Presentations from Newmont Mine.
Evening council, hope you're all doing well tonight, my name is Katie Blake, Sustainability and External Relations Manager. For the mine at CCNV. Just a quick update for me on cultural heritage management. Not sure if you're familiar with the deadwood head crane in the view shed here, sort of at the top of the hillside. We are planning to relocate the deadwood still in the view shed. Right now, the plan is to take it down in January and then relocate it shortly after. Still visible from both Bennett Avenue as well as the Heritage Center. I believe we supplied you with visual assist of where that will be relocated, but happy to send that to you. At a later date, if you'd like to take a look at that or discuss further. With me tonight, I have our new General Manager, Lori Smith.
Nice to meet you.
As as well as DJ Stines, who's visiting us from our corporate headquarters in Denver and he's going to give you an overview of taxes. Thank you, James.
Thank you very much, Mary, council, for allowing me the opportunity to present to you. My name is DJ Stines, I'm a Senior Director with Newmont Corporation, I think. Newmont Corporation for over twelve years prior to that, is a CPA with a large accounting firm with it two years. Tonight, I'd like to talk briefly about three taxes, I believe, impact both the state as well as Cripple Creek and Victor. Those three taxes are severance tax, producing mines tax, and the property tax. If you look over here, we have some handovers to to my slide presentations, I've talked about the seven steps. The PMT are producing mine sex and property tax. The severance tax is based upon, is a tax on two point two five percent of the gross income. To an extent exceeds nineteen million dollars per year. The producer, and that's that's a check they cut on a quarterly basis to the state of Colorado. The producing mines tax, as well as the property tax, are checks that we cut directly to Teller County. The producing mines tax is the greater twenty five percent of the gross proceeds or one hundred percent of the net proceeds, and we take a three year average on that. As it's been added to the property tax rolls for Teller County. The property tax, in addition to the producing mines taxes, also on the property tax rolls paid out to Teller County. The property tax is based upon our fixed assets, as well as our appreciable assets and our land associated with Cripple Creek and Victor Mining Operations. When you look at it, the main drivers associated with how much you can on the severance tax and the producing mines tax is based upon the gold ounces we will pull out of the ground. Or we can sell that gold for on a monthly and annual basis, as well as the costs associated with pulling that gold and extracting it from our operations. When we look at our tax points by year, if you look at it over here, again. You can't fly anywhere without some of these slides, but when you look at it for twenty twenty, we paid approximately ten point four million dollars between split between the severance tax, the producing mines tax and the property tax. We paid ten point two million dollars in twenty twenty one for those three taxes. It's interesting to note that in two thousand eighteen, we only paid eight point one nine dollars, so it's an increase of over twenty percent between twenty eighteen and twenty twenty one. Again, a large part of that is associated with the increasing growth of us. When we look at it, some of the things that we try to be as transparent as we possibly can with regards to the taxes that we pay. In twenty twenty one, we produce, or sorry, in September of twenty twenty two, we produced a first annual Taxes and royalties contribution report. In that report, we also have a landing page that talks specifically about the taxes we paid for Cripple Creek and Victor's mining operations to both the state and the local community. In addition to that, on an annual basis, we produce an economic impact report that also talks about the taxes that we pay at the state, the federal and the local levels. Both of those, the global tax and royalties report, as well as the economic impact report, can be found at newmont.com. And I appreciate your time, if you have any questions in regards to the taxes, we have the answer though.
I just have one, on your mill, it is not operating right now, is that correct? You're high grade now.
Yeah. All set then.
But this has to do with property taxes. Okay, is it, is it, is it operating or not?
It is currently in care and maintenance.
Okay.
Yeah, so not operating.
Okay, are you paying taxes on that, on that mill?
We are.
Okay, it is a fixed.
It's a fixed asset to right now. We are paying property taxes associated with the mill and all of our operations at Cripple Creek.
Okay, all right, appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you.
So we got on yet, good listen.
Sorry.
So come on yet.
I don't see him.
All right, on to new business. Presentation recommendations for allocation of pioneers in public service funding.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor and City Council. Ted Gordon, Director for Community of Harry Foundation, here in Cripple Creek. One of my favorite things to do is to be able to come and show you what what these students. Are responsible for and this great program that you guys help to support, community allocation funds. This year, I had a great pleasure of working with eight students in the pioneers and public service program. Program is committed to teaching students about philanthropy, civic engagement and leadership. Pioneers and Public Service Program is a collaboration between the RE One School District and Community of Harry and the City of Cripple Creek. The students were entrusted to send out requests for grant proposal, RFPs to local nonprofits, civic clubs and organizations. That provides services in Cripple Creek and in Southern Teller County. The students reviewed the applicants, applications, conducted interviews with the applicants. As a committee, made recommendations regarding allocation of fund. This grant cycle, these funds were comprised entirely by monies provided by the City of Cripple Creek's Community Allocation Fund, total in fifteen thousand dollars. On behalf of the students, advisory and grant applicants, we thank the City of Cripple Creek for making this program possible. I'd like to commend the pioneers in public service students for their excellent work, they were professional, fair and diligent in their commitment to this endeavor. Over the years, I've had the pleasure of working with dozens of students of all academic abilities, economic backgrounds and diverse personality. One thing has been a constant over all these years, the students rise to the level with the level of expectations set for them. They demonstrate professionalism, creativity and intelligent discernment. This is always one of my favorite programs and and this year's group of students were dedicated, attentive, professional. Learned a lot about nonprofits, grant making, community impact and fiscal responsibility and hopefully we got some fun on it. I take great pride in introducing pioneers in public service contingent. We have four out of the eight that are here, two have the blue and two are in the competition, cheerleading competition. We have Robin McKenzie, Damian Ramsey, and then here with us tonight, we have Simon Kendall and Kai, and then I'm going to introduce to you. Patrick Levens, who is going to give you a kind of a summary and an introduction of the program this year, so. Take it away, Kevin, come on.
No, just give your user first last. At least I've all you got to mean. My name is Patrick Levens, I'm like a apprentice in public service. Good evening, my name, sorry, I'm. We all represent the partners in public service, this year we worked on a program during our advisory lunch periods in school, there's ten grants submitted. All four grant funds from the Cripple Creek Community Allocation Fund. A total of eighteen thousand four hundred and fifty dollars was requested for all the grant applications and we were only allowed fifteen thousand to recommend. On November fifteenth, we conducted interviews at the Centennial Building inside of the Commissioners' Chambers. The following is the list of recommendations by the Pioneers in Public Service Program to the Cripple Creek students.
Hello, Mr. Kai, I would be covering the lead of the growing local grant application. The request was for two thousand one hundred dollars and we are recommending funding an amount of one thousand four. And I was the lead on the Choices Pregnancy Center grant application. Their request amount was eight hundred dollars and we manually voted to recommend the city council to fund them in the amount of one thousand two hundred.
Hello, Honorable Mayor and Chairman, I was the lead on the CASA grant application. They requested two thousand dollars and we are recommending only one thousand five. I was not the lead on this next one, but. Actually with her, it was for the You Are Not Alone kindness club. They requested two thousand dollars and we are recommending. They're not of one thousand five.
Oh, many. I wasn't. Lead on this grant. It's the. Trying to read this one's money, money grant application. Requested amount was a thousand. And then we are in the amount of one thousand. I was also not the way on this one, but. The open eighty, like was your grant application. Request amount was two thousand seven hundred and fifty. And we are recommending funding a money amount of two thousand. I was the lead on the senior portion, the question, the question amount was two thousand and we are recommending. You have pulled on of two thousand dollars.
I was not the lead, Robin Kennedy was the lead on this one. Tele County Farmers Market Grant Application requested one thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars and we are not recommending any funding to them. I was the lead on the Community Partnership Application, they requested two thousand dollars and we were recommending full funding. I was also the lead on Tyler Dila Plane on his doctoral dissertation. He requested two thousand dollars and we were recommending nine hundred dollars in funding.
Good job you guys, so, we would entertain questions from Mayor and the council in regards to the recommendations, as you can see, the total. Came to fourteen thousand, we were actually allocated fifteen. And were respectfully requesting, if possible, to roll over the thousand of unused funds into next year's program with that with that possibility. The students were really very diligent about how they wanted to fund these applicants. Any questions, I will make a couple of explanations, if you don't ask the question, I'm just.
Good, good way out.
I've got a question, Ted, I'm familiar with everything except for Gorman Medical, if you could explain that one, that seems to be a new one.
Yeah, so Gorman Medical is actually the provider here on the school grounds of the Young School-based Health Center. And so they are another primary care. And the grant request from them was for heart monitors that are one use heart monitors. And so they they apparently come in in packs of five, but they're pretty pricey. The students suggested that we allocate two of the packs of five heart monitors and then if they needed additional ones, they could come back to us. Next year, if that was their request, but they were very asked great questions about about Gorman and they were pretty satisfied, I think, with the answers that we provided.
Thank you.
I'm gonna take a stab at this question, so, so as you notice, the Woodland Park Farmers Market, Market. That was a brand, they actually were focusing on providing transportation. For people from the southern end of the county to the farmer's market that had food stamps or that they that had food insecurities. And we were impressed by that program, we thought this was one of the ones that they actually really asked a lot of questions of. We opted not to fund them this year, and this was unanimous decided by all eight of the students. Because it was such a new program that they didn't have, and and the grant timing, the grant came out and they really didn't have their program defined very well. So we also will encourage them to come back next year, if this plan makes a little more sense and it has a little more. It's it's tough to fund a startup, is what we're trying to say really, so we think that they should be considered again next year when maybe they have the the program and that particular project more departments. Did you guys want to say anything else, did we write any of the grants? Got to anything?
All right. Ted, just about the. Tenth year of them on council or mayor. And the kids have always done a very, very good job through the selection.
And impressive.
Yeah, you know, they they did this through their through their lunch hour and advisory. And this is one program that I love to be able to write letters for the kids after they graduate, this is a program that I think you notice is, it's not easy there to. Make these kind of decisions and they take a long time doing that, they have a great process for doing it, so it's always fun to come. And make these recommendations, so thank you guys so much, thanks Paul for making sure that we have. Fund allocated every year to be able to do this program and look forward to doing it more. We haven't proved it, but yeah.
We tell them, Mike, you go ahead and make that. I make a motion that we allocate the fourteen thousand dollars to pioneers in public service as explained. And that we roll over the additional one thousand dollars remaining to next year's budget.
I'll second. Hopefully, thank you.
So much, just reminder of all the great Christmas events coming up this weekend, Colorado Springs, Brown and all the great programs and tomorrow night, I think, is the city's. Christmas party, so before you go over to the party, stop at the Ask Mine Center and and look at all the trees. We have our Little Wonderland reception from four thirty seven, so if you guys can come over, encourage all the employees for the city to come over and look at all the green trees lit up, so.
We haven't taken, we haven't taken a vote yet on here.
Councilwoman Green.
Yes.
Councilwoman Salamani.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wibberland.
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Ashworth.
Yes. Thanks so much, everyone.
Thank you, Ted, thank you guys, you did a great job this year.
N I B, consider approval of a communication site lease agreement between Bureau Broadband LLC and City of Cripple Creek. Could include granting your city administration information. Inside the agreement.
Yeah.
We have a.
Good evening, thank you, I'm not Renee, my name is Grant P. Gary and I represent Bureau Broadband. Market Development Manager, Bureau Broadband Purchase Forthought and Rainstorm All That Jazz. We we have built fiber to seven hundred addresses or so in the community. This tower would be a redundant tower, in case the fiber goes down, it would be a redundant tower. It also serves its thirty wireless customers. And we're just asking to replace the existing tower with a new tower. And we're also agreeing to upgrade a current shed. In the cemetery, so we're and we're providing revenue to the community and the lease. I wasn't prepared to speak, so hopefully that covers it. I'm happy to answer any questions and also obviously invite breakout.
Um, I just have one question, is there height difference between the existing tower and the new town?
There is a small, it's in a different location slightly, so the new tower is sixty feet and the existing tower is a little bit shorter, I think it's forty five. All all. How do I say this, all interferences are legally bound by us to make sure that that doesn't happen, not said legally, but all those are in the agreement.
I have a question, on the tower, you have one, two, three. You have eleven items that are going to be added to the tower, is that correct?
Yes, and there's there's they're attached to the tower.
I can picture what it looks like, but you've got, you know, all these different heights, but there'll be eleven different.
And the, again, the height will be sixty feet.
And are you moving in a new building, those small receiver station for black and other things?
So currently the shed had, it always had our equipment in it, the shed was pretty rundown, so we've agreed to upgrade and. Provide a new door, so you guys have your side and we have our side.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
I might comment too. There's a lot of the old antennas out there, the ground base look like the big, there's like five of them.
The TV, the old stuff, we are integrating, we're getting rid of all that at our house. I think your summons are beautiful again.
Thank you.
And equally important, I really want to reiterate, we're really excited to be here and fiber to seven hundred addresses is really a win for us and we hope to be a good community member. We'll work with the school districts and any other nonprofits that need our help.
Do you have a motion? No. Pretty much boilerplate as far as the lease.
I'm sorry?
So it's pretty much standard lease.
It's very standard and we work with your attorney.
Questions, I think, I think this looks fine.
It's a five year lease.
Well, go ahead, make the motion that we approve the lease between Bureau Broadband and City of Cripple Creek.
One second. Oh please.
Councilwoman Salamani.
Yes.
Councilwoman Green.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wibberland.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Wibberland.
Yes.
Mayor Ashworth.
Yes.
And I see. Consider approval to authorize pass to advertise for engineering services, RFQs, wastewater plant.
Maybe, Mayor, council. Yes. I'm looking for authorization to some to advertise for an engineer to assist. In evaluating the state's requirements that we anticipate and plan. For a plant upgrade or replacement and cost estimates.
Yeah, I'm making, first of all, I want to say, great job, you and your folks have done an excellent job, we're really proud, thankful to have you.
Thank you, I have I have good support, both from my. Thank you, I have, I have good support both from my, uh. And staff and from council and administration. And, um, without them, didn't do this big job.
Do we have any idea at this point whether the state requirements should not be, or are we just shooting them right here?
Well, that's where we need the assistance of the engineering is, uh, we aren't sure of, we have, we anticipate. Um, nutrient limits being imposed. How severe those limits are, um, we don't have an idea until they're defined by permit. But, um. Without an engineer in place, when, to look at this or to, um, evaluate those needs. It, it would make our job a lot easier to, uh. To plan for whatever upgrades or whether or not a new facility or new. New treatment, um. Is necessary to meet.
And I have to believe that's, uh, as we're going along, that's becoming more critical to look at those things.
It is, it's, um. We're coming down to the point where it, it will happen from this, um, this telling year, and that's why we don't need to.
It's not, it's not that, right?
It's telling.
Okay, thank you so much, Gil.
Anyone else?
Yeah, Mickey, how long will the, how long will we anticipating the engineer to be on board with this once hired?
Well, um, this will be for next year, the funds are in the current budget, I'll give you approvals, uh. This engineer would do preliminary steps and then, uh. After, um. When necessary, we may issue another, uh. Request for qualifications for the final. Engineering design portions of, uh.
Okay, so this person would just basically walk us through the initials, state requirements and the steps and then. Moving forward, we would have another one to come help us do all the other groundwork. Is that what I'm understanding, well, I mean.
It, it could be the same engineering firm, but, um, the preliminary steps would be to evaluate the project. And give us cost estimates, alright, so. Define, define what our need would be, give us cost estimates and then. It would also let us know if we're gonna keep this engineering firm going forward with design and construction of, of the facility. Uh, just a side note, uh, I will be, Nick, and I'll be coming to you in January if you ought to consider. A owner's representative and funding RFQ. Uh, Aqua Works has told us they're not gonna be able to help us with this part, with this big of a. Project and our plans, so, but they would like to help us with. Uh, owner representative, so when this engineering firm, whoever we hire, looks at our plan and decides. They want to be able to help us evaluate, is that a good fix for, for. We go down the road for design and construction, so he actually recommended that we only hire his first engineer for the preliminary work and. Cost estimates. And they're doing a great job for us on funding, so we would really like to do another RFQ in January for owner representative and the funding part. I explained, well, who's good with that, so we're kind of breaking this into three sections.
Um, no, mine. Everybody else? Are there votes on this? Uh, motion that, uh. Uh, that we consider approval to authorize staff to have class for engineering services, uh, for the wastewater, uh. Treatment plant.
I'll second.
Vote please.
Council Green?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Witherland?
Yes.
Council Winternary?
Yes.
Council Salamani?
Yes.
Mayor Ashford?
Yes. Thank you, no, thank you.
Good job. In I D, consider approval of Resolution twenty twenty-two dash thirty-seven. A resolution letting general property taxes for the year of two thousand twenty-two. To help to trade the cost of government for the city of Krip Creek, Colorado for the. Two thousand twenty-three budget year.
Thank you, Mayor, first I'd like to thank all the council people for all your time on the process this fall. Three means that you, uh, I will have the final long version in your boxes tomorrow with the signed ordinances. Uh, so that will be wrapped and filed with the states, pushed on the website and. Loaded into the G O, we're good to go. This first ordinance is, the mayor outlined, is regarding just our P tax component of the budget. Um, it is an increase of seven thousand eight hundred sixty-five dollars or five point five percent over last years. Uh, and this was an unusual year, normally you have to have, uh, use the lower of the two restrictive measures. Tavor and the state's five point five percent rule, and this is, and I believe that. The state's rule was more restricted this year than it's given, so that's why you see it at that five point five percent level.
Um, can I ask, I, I have a question, this is down the road, on the Bronco Billy's project. Or Full House Resort project. When, or who set, when, when did the property taxes kick in on that? Building?
Yeah, one, you're reflecting, uh, you're delayed on the assessment, um, so. If it is functioning in twenty-three, um, you, you would normally take those in twenty-four. But I think it might be such a short window in twenty-three, we'll have to see what the opening is. Uh, and then the county, uh, will do the assessment, the evaluation of it.
Okay, I was curious, the case of, it starts off with the county, it works on through the school district or city, uh, you know.
Yes, I guess the county assessment sets the valuation of that.
Okay, that will be assessed based against the stages as the opening, is that correct?
That's my understanding.
Yeah, that's what I thought, thanks, Paul.
You have a question? You have a motion?
On the, uh, we approved Resolution lowering general property taxes for the year twenty twenty-two. Help to pray the costs of the government for the city of Krip Creek, Colorado for the, uh, twenty twenty-three budget year.
I'll second.
Vote please.
Council Winternary?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Witherland?
Yes.
Council Salamani?
Yes.
Council Green?
Yes.
Mayor Ashford?
Yes. In I D, consider approval of Resolution twenty twenty-two dash thirty-eight. A resolution summarizing expenditures and revenue for each fund and adopting a budget for the city of Krip Creek. Colorado for the calendar year beginning first day of January twenty-three and ending the last day of December twenty-three, Paul.
So the bottom of that first page, uh, with this resolution, we expect twelve, we see the general budget, okay, two million. Enterprise at two point seven, and that's largely the known, if you glance at the, uh, capital, if they were in this city model. Thing of historic preservation, it runs on, you know, total city expenditures next year would be fourteen point three six million. The next page gives you the breakdown of the revenue and reserves, I don't know, dollars, you, of the property tax, we discussed that in the general fund, that one, that one, five. We're also planning to use five hundred and fifty, roughly five hundred and fifty-three thousand in our reserves next year. Uh, and that's primarily to bump up the, the street paving program. The council, we've agreed to use five thousand dollars for that. And then eight point seven six will come from our overall revenue sources. And then you see the breakdown for enterprise, we're not using any reserves there. And then H P, we're using just about thirty-four K of reserves. And recall that we did bring back the residential grant program, the commercial grant, uh, casino program and some other things that. Uh, have been very popular in, we, we were back.
We close it.
I make a motion that we approve Resolution number twenty twenty-two dash thirty-eight. Second.
Vote please.
Mayor Proton Witherland?
Yes.
Council Salamani?
Yes.
Council Winternary?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Witherland?
Yes.
Mayor Ashford?
Yes. In I D S, consider approval of Resolution twenty twenty-two dash thirty-nine, resolution. Operating some of the money to the various funds and spending agencies in the amounts of the city. Of Krip Creek, Colorado for the year two thousand twenty-three budget year.
Well. This resolution takes those expenditures, we discussed on the first page of the prior resolution. It just separately separates them between operating expense and the capital outlay and debt components. So you see the general fund, uh, of their ten point two, most of that, almost nine point four is operating. Um, the capital component, eighty-seven, five hundred K of that is the street paving and then we also decided for just that. Cloud, uh, still cloud dump truck. And we're paying cash ourselves for that, but treating it as a maternal service fund and making it a fact to build that. And then underwater sewer, you see the operating capital outlay and the debt service for both the, uh, water, the only, the wastewater. And then, um, the historic preservation, you see the capital outlay of twenty K and one point three million in.
Vote.
And then, we would, we would normally seek public comment on this portion, um, approving this. So if you want to ask for any public comment on that, I'd be happy to hear.
Any public comment?
Here, then I'll motion that, uh, council approves, uh, wrote our Resolution number twenty twenty-two dash thirty-nine, a second.
Vote please.
Council Salamani?
Yes.
Council Winternary?
Yes.
Council Green?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Witherland?
Yes.
Mayor Ashford?
Yes.
Thank you very much, and thank you again, I would, I would be right on, thank you for your time.
Thanks, Paul.
Going into, uh, public hearing at this point. And I'll read the mayor's open statement. I want to open the public hearing on adoption of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twelve. Declaring dirty windows or vacant commercial buildings a nuisance. The following procedure will also apply to all successive agenda items. The procedure will be followed for these hearings will be as follows. City staff will present the ordinance. There were two public comments will then be allowed. And then, then, uh. With conclusion of each hearing, the council will deliberate and may make a decision on the ordinance or may take consideration. Of the ordinance under advisement. Then the city staff will be. I would do, in I D G, second reading, public hearing, to consider adoption of ordinance. Twenty-two, twenty twenty-two dash twelve declaring dirty windows or vacant commercial buildings a nuisance, right?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this is, is second reading on, um, you had a request, I guess, from council, we had, uh, buildings. In town vacant buildings, they weren't being maintained as far as. Cleanliness, uh, the buildings down the street, the kids, people didn't even need anything to write. Dirt, the windows were so dirty that they used their finger to write in the dirt on the window, leaving all kinds of comments. And so, um, it was asked that we put this, uh, ordinance forward. Uh, ordinance was written by Aaron and we provided, provided the council with a picture about the lead last time, some information from the chief on. How things like this can lead to further nuisances and, and, uh. His demeanor by people breaking glass, doing other things if things aren't maintained, so staff put this before council. And y'all had the first reading on it, I will tell you that, uh. Code enforcement has done a great job, he's already alerted those building owners that. This ordinance was out there, not, did you ask it yet, but it was out there, they're already cleaning their windows, so.
Have we commented? If not, we'll go back into, uh, your country. Second reading, the public hearing, to consider adoption of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twelve. By a dirty women or vacant park of buildings a nuisance. Don't hear a moment on that.
A move that we approved, uh, ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash twelve. Uh, amended chapter seven, article two, Krip Creek Minnesota code relating to nuisance stemming from. Uh, clearly visible commercial vacant buildings.
Second.
Vote please.
Mayor Proton Witherland?
Yes.
Council Winternary?
Yes.
Council Green?
Yes.
Council Salamani?
Yes.
Mayor Ashford?
Yeah. Okay, we're going back into public hearing. In I D H, second reading and public hearing to consider adoption of ordinance. Twenty twenty-two dash fourteen and ordinance vacating. That portion of Kermit Street right away as planted on the Hayden Plaza. Company subdivision of the Hayden Plaza dated January fifteenth, eighteen ninety-two. And recorded in playbook F at page twenty-eight in the official records. For the El Paso County, which is now Perry County, clerken recorded. Lying in the southwest quarter. Or the northwest, northeast quarter. For section thirteen township fifteen south. Range seventy west in the city, man, in the city of Krip Creek. Keller County, state of Colorado, Ken?
You, council mayor, I'm simply, oh, foot slides, but we've seen this in the first reading, this is the fire worship at the north. And, um, um, sixty-seven, that comes around, uh, something along with the cinema, that's. And so Wildwood Casino is asking for, former Wildwood Casino is asking that the group portion be vacated so that they could. Develop landscaping and new signage in that area. And just a picture of that property as it is now, and. Copy of the platform is provided, that is part of the exhibits, um. We've not received any information on what the actual development may be, this landscape and signage, so that would be a further, we were, we were down the road for how they develop it. Um, only negative response we've seen to this is. Uh, there was a sign there for youth theater, which was in this repair, it's only, but there's. That discussion about reestablishing and some signage to support the theater, and this would be an appropriation for that. That's the only negative comments we've seen of the person, uh. The vacation implies with all the requirements from the state and the city, uh, requirements, and so, uh, a request, uh, written in the meeting. I have a question, there is, we, probably. You want me, yeah, I have a question.
Okay, one public comment this time. You may have come in. Or come.
Probably, yes, I do, Kim, is there a representative Wildwood here? Okay, well, my question is this, uh. You have, uh. According to Mr. Kim, four of the preacher owners want a landscape and place signage on this property. What type signage, do you have any idea how much you'd buy on that?
Will be, uh, the Golden Nugget actually asked, uh, the mayor to go through this process. Because they wanted to put a sign on the Golden Nugget and it changes hands, it will change December first.
Okay, the reason, there, there's two reasons that I am, I'm asking this question. One, if we, I personally, and maybe there's a lot of other people agree with me, these digital signs, if you.
These digital signs, if you have a digital sign right there, you'll blind everybody when they come around the corner. You know, like, for example, down in Wildwood, or I'm excuse me, on the double eagle. It would be? Uh and the second thing, you know, if uh I would like to recommend to our planning department um one of the staff or student staff, or staff members uh uh would like to know or likely requested that if we could possibly be able to advertise on their sign could be theater. Since we have been, we're, we're losing at that piece of property where the people's sign is to be.
That property was, you know, the, the, the Willy's Zone, the, as hotels, and therefore I'm going through historic preservation process.
The staff had a drawing of that little triangle done in the past that has uh related to the the mining of the city and then had the beauty theater on it. And I showed Golden Nugget that picture. Um so they're aware of what it was going to be used for and it was used for the beauty theater. And they didn't give me confirmation that they would do the view, that they want to work with the city.
Okay, that's good to know. But you know, if we could keep that in mind, I, I think. And third thing is carbonate spelled wrong on the first slide. It's carbonate, not caratite.
You know, Ken, then further, can I tell to me?
Yeah, I motion that we approve ordinance number uh twenty twenty-two fourteen.
I'll second.
Vote please. Gentlemen, I second reading, public hearing, consider adoption of ordinance twenty twenty-two fifteen. And ordinance amended ordinance twenty twenty-one dash twenty, which amended ordinance twenty-one dash over two, which amended ordinance twenty eighteen dash over five. They came in portions of the alley within the city of Cripple Creek, but described in this ordinance.
This one and the next one are both related to Full House. And I think council will remember the original ordinance closed. This is the alley uh running east and west for them to construct the hotel. And uh they were here last time and they were requesting an extension based on the tower two, which is actually tower three. They call it tower two, getting constructed. They're delayed in the construction of tower two. They thought they would be able to open the hotel in phases starting at the close, like the end of June, which was not a part of our requirements for the closing of the street. But because of tower two, they're not, and state fire marshal has told them no until all three towers are completed. You can't open any part of the hotel. So they've asked for an extension until December thirty-first of next year. Uh Nikki told you at the last council meeting that they're thinking probably September. It's about what they're thinking now, they'll start opening, but they went ahead and applied for December in case they're running the regulation, but I think they want to get it open as soon as possible. So but this is that request on the alley. It was tied to, if you remember, the date was tied to their opening or the alley could revert back to the city. Same thing with the next hour. Correct, Aaron? And so unless you want the alley back.
Any public comment? Move back in the river. Confirming.
Mayor, I think you could ask for two motions, uh one for uh ordinance twenty twenty-two dash sixteen or fifteen and then sixteen as well. Um and I don't think you need to have a separate public hearing. So you can let the hearing you've had satisfy that need for a public hearing. And you could just do one motion, vote on it, and then do the second motion and vote on. Yeah, she said we can do both I N J without opening public hearing and then so I'll go ahead and make the motion on agenda I define. My motion will be approved for the summer twenty twenty-three dash fifteen.
Vote second.
Vote please.
I want to make a motion that we also approve uh ordinance number uh twenty twenty-two dash sixteen as it relates to the same project.
I'll second.
Vote please. In item K, second reading, a public hearing to consider adoption of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash seventeen. An ordinance of the city council of Cripple Creek Colorado imposing a temporary moratorium on submission, acceptance, processing, and approval of any applications for the, a city of Cripple Creek permitting of license related to the operation of medical or retail marijuana business. Directing the prompt investigation of the city regulatory party over subject businesses and declaring the intention of the city council to consider the adoption of appropriate city regulations with respect to such businesses and declaring emergency errands and
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, this ordinance would impose a, if passed, a one hundred and eighty day uh period uh in which those who wish to seek a license would have to wait. And the reason for that one hundred and eighty day period that we're requesting is so that the city um staff can work with the city attorney to um prepare the various ordinances that will have to come back in front of council to uh amend your municipal code with regard to taxes that the voters voted on uh and need to have um an ordinance to approve the administrative processes for collecting those, also so that the zoning um um issues can be investigated by city staff with recommendations back to council on how to zone for these new marijuana businesses. And then, of course, there will just be the need to compile the various forms for applying for the licenses. And also to figure out, since this uh ordinance that the voters passed limits the number of licenses to two per type of business. Um to figure out exactly how those that are competing for those two licenses. Um will a process for dealing with how to issue those licenses in light of those competing interests. Um this um is set for a public hearing and I would recommend following um any public comment that you would approve this ordinance and be happy to answer any questions.
Any public comment? If not, we'll go back into regular council session. Motion on the second reading.
I'll make the motion that we approve ordinance twenty twenty-two dash seventeen.
I'll second.
Vote please.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes.